Good evening. The January 13th, 2022 City Council Meeting for Longview, Texas is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by District Two Councilwoman Ms. Nona Snotty. Please rise.
Good evening, everyone. Could you please bow your head for prayer? Our Father, chart in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not, dear God, into temptation, but deliver us from all this evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Your Honor. Quick to send some comment, I do have a speaker card. Nothing to say, sir? Okay. Very good. I have one. Matthew Prosser? Welcome, sir.
Yeah, Matthew Prosser, 1705 Rainbow Drive, and I'm here for the item on zoning. If you guys have any questions.
Perfect. We'll get you back to winning, Matthew. Thank you. Nice to have you, sir. Have no more speaker cards. We didn't even know if I'd like to speak and fill out a card after the meeting is over with. Perfect. We have a public safety update. Chief Bishop is out tonight. We will have our public safety update from Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mac. Members of council. Mr. Bonds, thank you for the opportunity to update you on a few things that have happened in the fire department since our last council meeting back in December. Our annual toy drive that we do ahead of the Christmas holiday was a huge success this year, and I've never been ceased to be amazed by this community that when you put a project out there, they always come up and do the heavy lifting. And they certainly turned out in droves back on December the 11th to support this effort. We partner on this annually with the Longview Firefighters Association and the Department of Family Protective Services to see that no children go without during the Christmas holidays. And because of this community stepping up, we were able to put at least 1,300 toys out into the community and kids that might not have had otherwise. So I always want to just say how appreciative I am to have such a supportive community that always come through anytime we have a need. So thank you for that. I'd like to congratulate our Assistant Chief of Operations, Brian Jones. Brian hit his 25-year anniversary mark. He's doing an outstanding job for us. Look forward to 25 more years with him, and just congratulations on hitting that tenure mark. He'll be 108 when he retires. Today, we got to participate in a public safety job fair out at Maucab. This was mainly at the request of Public Safety Communications, who is undergoing some hiring challenges right now, but they brought in the rest of public safety. We did get to visit with a handful of people out there that expressed some interest in the Longview Fire Department, so we're glad we got to be a part of that and look forward to anybody that wants to follow through. Our hiring process is open all the time. We never close it down. So we're always looking for good, qualified people. So thanks for letting us be a part of that. And this is kind of bittersweet. We're going to bid farewell to Captain Trey Rhodes. Trey's been with the city for 23 years. He came to us from, we stole him from Kilgore Fire Department back 23 years ago as a firefighter EMT basic, and he's changing, turning a page in the chapter in the book of his life, and he's going to move on to some new things. So we certainly wish him well and thank him for 23 years of solid service to the citizens of Longview. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Stillman? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're to consent agenda. Any items council would like to pull off for separate discussion?
No, do you approve?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are to zoning. Public hearing being held to consider applications Z 21-19 filed by LST. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mac, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting to rezone from multifamily one and office zoning district to light commercial zoning district. The applicant is requesting this rezone to allow for poll signs at their, at the location. Multifamily zoning districts and office zoning districts don't allow for poll signs, however, they do allow for monument signs, which they currently have at this site. So they are wanting to install two poll signs, one along Loop 281 and one along Hawkins Parkway. Staff does find that the proposed zone change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This has required public hearing, which is now open. Any questions on Ms. Choi or Mr. Prosser?
I do have a question, Angela.
Yes, sir.
You know, we've worked to keep big advertising signs from going up in town.
Yes, sir.
So what size signs are they talking about putting up here?
So what they're looking at, their signs are about 150 square feet in size around average. There's two. One is 160 square feet, and the other is 135 square feet, and that does include digital elements, but it's not billboards. It's on-premise, so they're advertising school activities. Yeah, so it won't, it will not be a billboard sign.
It meets all of our sign ordinances.
Yes, sir. It does comply with the sign ordinance.
Any other questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Can I make a motion? Will you approve?
We have a motion of second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Act item A, Consider Resolution to Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Change Order Number 10 with Leland Bradley Construction. Mr. Archer.
Mayor, council, Mr. Bonds, this evening, I've got for you, for your consideration of resolution to execute change order number 10 to Leland Bradley Construction for the Guthrie Creek Shared Use Path. This first picture here shows the completed Judson Road Bridge, and here is McCann Road currently under construction. And so with change order number 10, due to some rain delays and some utility issues that we ran into, we've had to extend the traffic control, so that's part of this increase that we're looking at. TexDOT has required, initiated and required that we do some additional asphalt paving there on McCann, and then we've got some additional subgrade work that we're going to have to do on that southern part of that trail. And then we've added a small allowance for just unforeseen circumstances that may come up, because every now and then, there's a little something that you need to add. So ask for your consideration to approve this change order for $141,335.
Any questions, Mr. Archer? Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Archer and I had pretty good extended discussions on this, and I just questioned him. I thought it was unusual to have 10 change orders on a project, and we worked through that. But more importantly, I talked to him, I was on Judson Road, and that's not complete.
No, it is not.
So is this his final payment?
No. No. This is just saying that the contract, we're going to extend the contract, but we still have lots of payments still to make.
Okay.
And so we'll make sure that all that stuff is done before we finish up this contract.
Yeah, it's not, I don't think it's acceptable.
No.
No, it's a long way to go. They're not through yet.
Yeah. There's several things they need to work on. We understand that.
Thank you. Mr. Pertle?
Did these change orders include the washout and everything that was underneath the bridge?
Yes.
Is that included in this one?
Yes.
That we walked through and saw?
That was, that was already actually taken care of.
Okay.
So, yeah. That's not in this one. That was already taken care of.
Mr. Wright?
My only question on that is, so you've included some extra funds in case there's anything else to do, which I can understand. The only thing that concerns me about it is people sitting there looking at, looking at, there's some money sitting here, and well, we can come up with a way to spend it that it'll get spent, whether it really needs to be or not. And that, I just, that concerns me a little bit.
You just have to prove. This is just saying, the contract amount, it allows the city that kind of funding to make sure this project gets completed, and our intention is, if we don't need those funds, we're not going to use them. And so, and if they, if they come to us and say, hey, we need that for something, they're going to have to, they're going to have to justify and prove that up.
Any other questions, Mr. Archer?
Move for approval.
We have a motion of second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
We're not consider a resolution appointing the city manager and authorize the mayor to executing documents associated with said appointment. We've been very fortunate in Longview to have quality staff and leadership for many, many years. 14 years ago, when David Willard was hired as city manager, that council chose to look outside the organization. Four years ago, when David Willard retired, we were fortunate to have Keith Bond, who had served as Assistant City Manager since 2014, and had served as Director of Public Works before that. We all knew we had a quality person within the organization already, and we were confident he would do a great job. Now, with Keith's impending retirement, we have a similar decision to make. This past June, we appointed Public Works Director Ronald McPhee to serve as our interim city manager. Ronald has worked for the City of Longview Public Works Department for more than 20, 20 years. We are very, we are all very familiar with his leadership and impact in the city and the community. I believe he has earned our confidence through his diligence and dedication and ability, and he has shown his ability to do this job. So I entertain any discussion on this item? If there's no discussion, is there a motion?
No motion.
Make a motion. Will you approve?
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're not consider an ordinance proving the city manager's recommendations regarding the appointment of Mary Ann Hagenbueker as Assistant City Manager, appointment of Laura Hill as Director of Grant Services, the appointment of Sean Hara as Director of Community Destinations, appointment of Dwayne Archer as Director of Public Works, the appointment of Dietrich Johnson, Director of Community Services, and the appointment of Bonnie Hubbard as Director of Administration, including amending the personal policies and procedures in accordance with said recommendations. That was a mouthful. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, Mayor, council. As the mayor just read this caption, this item describes one of the duties of the city manager as required by the city charter. And the charter states that the city manager shall, with the approval of the council, appoint the administrative officers and directors of the city departments. In the next few minutes, I'd like to describe some of the requests I have for council to reestablish the position of Assistant City Manager, to create the Grant Services Department, to create the Community Destinations Department, to appoint the directors to those departments as well as three other departments. And I'd like to start out by saying and pointing out that these appointments will realize an annual savings of over $140,000 for the general fund and over $12,000 for the total city budget. I'd like to start with and first discuss, discuss the reestablishment of the Assistant City Manager position. This has been a traditional position for the city prior to 2018, and as Dr. Mac previously mentioned, I was the last full-time, permanent Assistant City Manager, and served from March 2014 to December 2017, almost four years. This position, and I know that provides critical support and continuity for the city manager. As we started thinking about this, we did survey our city council-approved 16 comparative cities and found that 15 of them had at least one Assistant City Manager. So I am recommending that Mary Ann Hagenbueker be appointed to this position. Ms. Hagenbueker currently serves as our Director of Administration, a position that she's held for almost eight years. She has a bachelor's degree in communication and started her career with the city in the year 2000. She has worked her way up this organization, has held several positions along the way, such as Administrative Assistant, Legal Assistant, Office Manager, Assistant to the City Manager, and now as the Director of Administration. And in 2015, she obtained her master's degree in public administration. She will oversee the Departments of Administration, Grant Services, Community Destinations, Community Services, Information Services, and Parks. I'd next like to appoint Dwayne Archer as the Director of Public Works. Mr. Archer is a U.S. Army veteran. He has worked for the city for 26 years, starting in the warehouse. From there, he moved to sanitation and fleet management. Some of his accomplishments in sanitation and fleet management are the reopening of the compost site after it closed in the year 2000. He developed a plan that allows every home in Longview the opportunity to participate in recycling. He has developed a vehicle replacement plan. He moved our fleet services department from an, to an ASC Blue Seal shop. He developed the bulky item project, program, and has reduced the waste stream to the landfill through our yard waste collection program. Public Works is the largest department in the city, both in terms of number of employees as well as budget, and Mr. Archer will be doing his own reorganization within this department, including appointing two assistant directors. I would next like to appoint Bonnie Hubbard as the Director of Administration. Ms. Hubbard currently services our Human Resources and Risk Manager. She has worked with the city since 2003 and has held positions such as Customer Service Representative, Administrative Assistant, Human Resources Generalist, and the Human Resources Manager. She obtained her bachelor's degree in 2010 in Business Administration. Her department will consist of Human Resources, Risk Management, the Municipal Court, and Animal Services. I'd next like to create a Department of Grant Services. The city receives a large number of grants, and the trends indicate that this is only going to continue to increase. In the last five years, we've received grants totaling $46.6 million, $20.3 million just this past year. And many of these grants are managed by different departments in the city, and as a result, we create some confusion and inconsistencies with our administrative responsibilities. I would like to recommend Laura Hill be named Director of Grant Services. Ms. Hill has worked for the city for 34 years and has held different positions such as Recreation Coordinator, Recreation Supervisor, Operations and Maintenance Manager, Assistant Director of Community Services, Director of Parks and Recreation, and since 2005, she has been our Director of Community Services. Ms. Hill has a degree, a bachelor's degree and two master's degree, the second one of which is in public administration. Ms. Hill has extensive experience in acquiring and administering grants, and her history of compliance has been impeccable. She has been instrumental in helping the development of projects in the city such as the Train Depot, the Arboretum, and has been great in responding to various emergencies like years ago Hurricane Katrina and Hurricane Rita. And she is always a part of any committee that we create with the city to help in our Next, I'd recommend the reorganization of our Community Services Department, which will allow them to focus on housing, community development, and arts and culture. This reorganization includes the appointment of Dietrich Johnson as the Director of Community Services. Mr. Johnson began his work with the city in 1992 as community organizer within the office known as the Drug Task Force, which is now partners in prevention. His 29 years with the city have included an array of roles and professional advancement, and is currently the Assistant Director of Community Services. He has led and implemented many new program ideas and concepts for the city, including the implementation of the city's public transit system in 2003. He is actively involved in our community through various service organizations, from being the past president of the local nonprofit coalition to the past president of Longview Rotary Club, currently the liaison for the cultural arts community, and administers the distribution of the hotel occupancy tax funds for the arts. Over the years, Mr. Johnson has been successful grant writer for the city, and he's secured many foundation state and federal dollars to fund a range of programs and demonstration projects. Lastly, I'm recommending the creation of the Department of Community Destinations. This is a department that existed many years ago, and this department will consist of Visit Longview and Main Street, the Convention Complex, Media Development, and the Library. And I'm recommending that Sean Hara be named the Director of Community Destinations. Mr. Hara has served as the Media and Tourism Manager since 2015, overseeing media development, Visit Longview and Main Street, and he's probably better known as our city spokesperson, spokesperson, the position that he's held since 2008. He began his career with the city in 2003 and has held positions such as the Community Relations Coordinator, Public Information Officer, and Assistant to the City Manager. Mr. Hara has two bachelor's degrees. He has a BA in History and Political Science and a BS in Business Administration, and he also holds a master's degree in public administration. So in conclusion, this is the list of all of the positions that I've described and their proposed appointments. Mr. McPhee and myself have worked on this project for past several months. We have both personally been a part of several reorganizations as city staff members and have led other reorganization efforts as well in departments that we have led. So I'm proud of this effort, and I know this plan will result in a more efficient and cost-effective organization, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I want to thank Keith and Roland for developing this plan and presenting it to us today for our consideration. As I've said before, Longview has been very fortunate regarding the quality of our staff. As mayor and council, we are elected volunteers who are tasked with making decisions for the benefit of Longview. I say volunteers because I think most people don't realize that we aren't all at City Hall every day. We serve in these roles because we care about our community, but each of us also have other jobs that we do on a daily basis. It's our role to provide vision and direction to our city government. One of the key ways we do that is through the hiring of the city manager to serve as the CEO of our organization, and that we entrust the city manager with the responsibility to implement that vision that we set, to hire and fire staff and to oversee the day-to-day operations of our city. When leadership positions become available in any organization, there's often the question of whether it is better to promote from within or to search outside the organization. I think both options can be valid and successful, depending on the circumstances. There are times when you need to look outside the organization if there is not yet a clear internal candidate, or you need to find new direction inside or skill that you don't internally have. Personally, I prefer to be able to promote from within when the situation allow, when you have individuals ready and willing to serve and are able. We've had great success growing and developing our own employees into leadership. We invest in our employees to seek higher education and professional development. We invest them to learn and improve their skills. Each of the recommended appointments at this time have spent the bulk of their careers serving the citizens of Longview. Altogether, they have more than 140 years of service. Why wouldn't we take advantage of that experience and seek a return on our investment? We invest in them, and they've invested in the city. You can see this trend throughout our organization. I think it's a testament to our organization that we are able to continue to provide opportunities for internal growth and development. I realize there are a lot of moving parts and pieces that are being presented, but I think that each piece provides benefit to our organization and our community. When Keith and Roland first talked to me about this organization plan, I told them that for me to give it any consideration whatsoever, it needed to be financially responsible and without significant impact to the budget, because that's our major goal, is to financially responsible to the citizens for our budget. They have accomplished this, and I want to thank them for that. I do want to say something specifically about the Assistant City Manager position. I know we did not have an Assistant City Manager position for most of Keith's tenure. Back when we promoted Keith from Assistant, from the Assistant City Manager, we didn't fill the position due to concerns about the economy at that time, because we were very stretched. That's when we were having struggles with our sales tax revenues, and we omitted that position. But in conversation with Keith, I know he feels that position would have been very beneficial to him and to the organization. I know he wouldn't make this recommendation if he didn't believe it would be of benefit moving forward as well. So I have full confidence in Roland to serve as city manager, whether or without an Assistant City Manager. But we appointed a city manager that we can trust to lead the organization, and as such, we should give great weight and consideration to the recommendations that they present to us. Operating within Assistant City Manager is a very common structure in the cities of our size, as Keith has already said, and I trust Roland and Keith, and they say our city would operate better with this reorganization. I thank you for the time that y'all put into this. I know it's not easy, but I'm confident it sets us on a strong path and a transition as you retire, Keith. Questions or comments from council?
I have several questions and comments that I'll start with. When we visited with Roland before, I really believed, from what we were led to believe, that the Assistant City Manager position would not be filled. And then also question that if this was indeed coming, then this is coming from Keith, but Roland takes over on the first, and so I think there should have been some additional council input, because there's some other issues. If you look through the numbers, and you know, I've talked to Keith and to Roland both, and when I see the numbers, I can't see exactly where the savings are coming from, because your salaries are bumping in about nine cases. And so I'm just not, I'm not seeing the, the flow through on the numbers unless some of the numbers that were already in, the general fund numbers were, were just there. And I find it ironic that we are making the, the transition for Roland to become our Assistant City Manager, I mean, to become our city manager, and that, that these appointments should get some further council input.
I don't know if Keith wanted to address the funds. I assume it's from eliminating positions in the reorg. Is that fair?
It's real simple. Taking my salary, spreading it over the rest of the people. I'm the one leaving. One less employee with the city.
But you're adding...
Not adding anybody.
You're taking his salary and redistributing it, Tim, and you're eliminating one position.
Ms. Hubbard is moving up, not giving a replacement, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Well, how would, okay.
Mr. Dwayne is taking Roland's job. Bonnie's going to take Mary Ann's job.
Do you have something to say, Kristin?
Sean already works here.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, I guess I'm, I've been around the longest at this point. So Assistant City Manager is a pretty normal, you know, we had one when I started on council, so that's something I'm accustomed to and honestly thought was strange that we didn't have with Keith. And I've been through several of the reorgs, and I really, the comment I wanted to make just about reorganization is that I really feel like it's important to us as a city that we be open to that when it is presented to us. So we've just voted that Roland is the city manager and told him, we trust him to lead the city, and then now he's, Keith and Roland are both saying, this is what the city needs to be successful. I don't have any trouble with additional positions. I think it is more transparent in that those are the jobs the folks we have there are doing. So in moving them to the positions that they are actually doing, I feel like that's more efficient from the city side, and really should be applauded. I think we need to separate, as we've had some conversations about this, the conversations between like the reorg itself and looking at the structure versus the people that are going there. I think, in my mind, those are kind of separate discussions that get a little muddied. I am 100% on board with the concept of the reorganization, that there are those positions created, and you know, it is helpful for the city to be as efficient as possible, people be in the right jobs, and we call it what it is, right? So if, you know, Laura's doing all the grants, and we have enough grants that it warrants having a director, well, let's, let's call her what she is, right? And you know, have everything, not just keep everything the way that it is, because we've always done it that way, and not be open to that. I appreciate that those are things that staff brings to us and says, this would be the best way we should operate, and I want to be cautious about saying, no, don't tell us those things. Keep it as it is. We don't want to know. So I just think, for the purposes of discussion, if we could try and separate just the actual positions versus problems that people want to discuss about who's going in there with those potential issues, I think the reorg is a good, a good reflection of us doing a good job leading and putting people in the right places.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. [inaudible].
When Keith started over here under David Willard, I think we can all agree, Mr. Willard was a really good city manager, and he'd already had experience as an Assistant City Manager and a City Manager. And he was, and he had an Assistant City Manager here with Keith. And you served for three or four years, and as Andy said, we didn't put an assistant in place because we were hurting, the city wasn't kind of financial bind. So Keith agreed to take the position without an assistant. I kind of think that it could probably be run better here with an assistant, with Roland having an assistant. And not only that, we have somebody, whether it's Mary Ann or whoever we put in there, who can learn and function to become possibly a future city manager. So I, I feel like this is a good move to do that. As Kristen said, let's separate the, the reorganization from the people that are being put in there. I think Keith and Roland have put in who they think they could work well with and who would do a good job. I'm sure they're not looking to set themselves up to fail. So personally, I'm in favor of this reorganization.
I, I'm sorry, Don. Go right here.
Good evening, everyone. I think, you know, and of course, I, I, I look at things a little bit differently. I don't think it's undermining Roland's ability to manage the city. It's, it's obvious that he can do that. I said, but what we have to understand is that when we're looking at this, this, this reorganizational chart, there is no diversity in this chart, or if it is, it's very limited. And that is my concern, Longview, is when I start looking at the hierarchy of things for years, I mean, we've been here, I'm in my seventh year. There is a lack of diversity. If we were to put a face with all of those names, you know, it's not going to paint a true picture or reflection of who Longview is. That is my concern when we start. That is my concern when we start talking about reorganization. We're, we're talking about growing your own, except for the own is always the same. It's, you know, you just said it. You, you're aligning the city, assistant city manager up to become city manager and so on and so on, but none of those people or minorities are not included in that. That is definitely a big concern for me. I mean, if, if the city and the city organization is going to be reflective of who we are, we have to start looking at that, not down the road. I mean, I'm aware that there are people who have been working for the city for 20, 30, 40 years and are still in supervisory positions, not even ever being considered for directors. So when do we get to that point, Longview? I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking. I, I, I have concerns and tonight, my, my, the only thing I was hoping we could do was to table this so that we could discuss it a little bit more in detail so that we could vet it out as a council a little bit more. It's hoping not to be able to even make a decision tonight on this, but to discuss it thoroughly so that everyone could express their concerns, you know? I don't know.
I think I just, I would just like to personally respond because I want you to know that I hear you and I agree with the issue that you've raised. I think there is a lack of diversity in our higher levels of admin in the city staff and that is something that we should investigate and figure out a solution to. I don't think, I mean, if I'm just being honest, I don't, I, I think all the people that are proposed are qualified, so I don't think the solution is delaying it and coming back to it, but I do think there is a solution that we need to come up with.
And I don't think we're questioning qualifications here.
Yeah.
In looking at the chart that we received, you know, and it just doesn't stop at the director's level. It's throughout that I have questions about, and I don't think those are questions that we can answer here today in one city council.
But Nona, I might add.
Sure.
And I agree, I agree with you. Diversity is extremely important in our community because we are a diverse community. We are, and we need to reflect that. So that needs to be part of your charge to our new city manager and tell him that's something you want to see him look into. That's, that's his, that's your role as a council person to address with your city manager that we hire and fire, remember, we only hire and fire four people, gang, only four of them. He's just one of them. So if that's a concern to you, which it should be, concern to all of us, that should be a directive you send to Rollin and say, let this be noticed. We want to see some change. We want to see something occur because that's how you initiate change. You have to bring it forward and I think you're doing that.
Yeah. And, and I guess, I guess with, with that being said, I don't, Rollin's been around for a while, Keith has been around for a while, it hasn't occurred. So that is, I mean, at what point, Andy, do we get?
It's the same reason you don't have any in the police and fire because there's no one applying for the jobs and you can't hire people that aren't qualified.
And I understand that.
Therefore, there have to be qualifications and if they meet those, then they should be considered.
Agreed.
And if they're not, then, then if they're not being considered, we're not doing our job. And that's where it falls upon Rollin.
And that's when...
If there are qualified people, then that should be part of the qualifying process. If there aren't, we can't bring them out of thin air.
If there are not minorities that are qualified, then I'm sure outside of the city there are.
Well, I'm sure there are, but if you don't, if you don't, if you don't allow to promote from within, Nona, then you don't, you don't encourage, you get mediocre attitudes, you get mediocre work and you get mediocre performance. If people don't think they can, they can advance from within an organization, you'll never have a successful organization.
And I guess in speaking to some minorities within the city, there is mediocre morale because they feel like they don't, that they are overworked.
Change that.
That they, that there is no opportunity, that there's a ceiling and they're, they can only go so far. And I, I don't know if you guys understand what I'm, I'm trying to express.
Absolutely, 100%.
But it is looking through a different, you know, I have to look at things differently because I am talking about minorities. I sit in the seat of a minority here and I have to be the voice for that. If we continue on this road, it's going to forever be that. I don't see any change happening. I see us growing our own internally and that being the people that are handpicked for these positions and it doesn't include minorities or people that look like me. Dietrich has been here for what, 30 years?
I'm sorry.
30 years.
I'm sorry.
Dietrich, 30 years. And he's just, there's just now an opening for him after 30 years. You know, it's, sometimes there's a fast track and sometimes for others, there's not. So when do we get to a point, and I understand things being competitive, Andy. I understand that there are things we have to do and we can't, or we shouldn't, you just said it, promote those that are not qualified.
Correct.
And what do those qualifications look like? Is it a degree? Is it not a degree? Is it, I mean, what are we asking for? The water is already pretty muddy to me in some cases within the city. So that's why I'm saying I think we need to have a little bit more time to vet it out and to talk about it.
I just want to add a couple of things.
Please, Ray.
You know, this is my first opportunity to be a part of one of the big four hirings and, and honestly, I got excited about it and, you know, I came and I met with Mr. Bonds because I was concerned with how it goes beneath that. You know, a couple of things I would have liked to seen happen is for it to be a competitive hiring process. And what I mean by that is even if we do, you know, insist or we do want to promote from within, at least we take the time to open this up and let there be some outside competition. I felt like, or I feel like over the last few hires we've had, we've just been content with keeping it closed and in-house. And when you do that and sitting in the chair I'm in, representing, you know, the most diverse part of our city, I have to then answer to them why I'm not involved in some of these decisions that are made to create that diversity. And so being a voice of my community, these are the things that become an issue is, okay, we feel like our city employees should look like the rest of the city of Longview on every level. And it should not be considered that there's only a certain level that that diversity stops. So that's the one point. And the other point is, is yeah, you know, I feel like there should be outside competition. I feel like we should be able to open this up and even if we do finally make the decision to hire with Dan, that at least we've opened it up and we've heard some other voices. That's it.
Thank you, Ray.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
I do.
Ms. Carter?
I'm probably the catalyst that's started this thing, Doc. Right off the bat, I asked for the salaries. And that's one of the things that I'm over and have to look at for 13,000 plus people in my area. One of the things that insults me is when they drag out this sheet that shows what they get paid in Dallas or Tyler or Sherman or whatever. I don't really care. And I've told Keith and Rollin both that. If you don't like what we can offer you here, don't put it up there and tell me that this is what they get in Dallas. If you don't like what you get here, go to Dallas. Go to Sherman, go to Tyler. I, I, I'm sorry, staff, but that's the way I feel. I'm not responsible to you. I'm responsible to the 13,000 people that I represent and those are the people that put me in this chair, not staff. So when I look at it this way, if you want to compare apple to apples, let's, let's compare the assistant city manager deal. Started off at $211,000, Keith.
No.
No, it's on that sheet there. That's benefits and salary.
You're right.
$211,000 is benefits and salary.
Right.
I've got a county judge that makes less than $100,000 a year and he's over 800 people. I've got a superintendent at one of the schools that's over 4,600 students and 700 people and he only makes 186 a year. So am I being prudent at looking at this? Because the same people that are elevating themselves to these positions are the same people that are telling us what they're going to make. How many people up here in this deal knew what you made a year?
My contract is open, Ray.
It is, but I...
It's been read at that...
Don't argue with me, Keith. You've had your chance to talk. Now, I'm talking.
Okay.
You've had your chance to talk.
You asked me a question.
No. I said, how many people up here? I didn't say Keith.
That was a question.
I know how much you make. I asked you two years ago. Now, my problem with this is I've got the same people that are putting themselves in these positions that are basically naming their salary. Out there in the free market, we can't do that. You're using, you're using, you're using this chart that you get from all these other towns and telling me they've got two, two assistant directors or none or three or whatever. I don't really care.
I understand.
I care about the funds that I'm going to do. And when I ask you and Rollin where this 200, well, it started off at 132, then it went to 134, now it's 146 or 143 or whatever it is, I've got it written down here, that we were saving.
Oh, yeah.
That we were saving.
Right.
Then I get these salaries and start adding them together and we're spending $286,000 in salaries.
Right.
Now tonight, you're telling me we're saving that because we're taking your salary out.
Right.
So we're not really saving a dime. And the same people that made up, and it's the same people that do the budget for us every year.
We reduced, we reduced one of those.
No, Keith, I'm still talking. I would like you to give me the courtesy. I listen to you.
Sure.
Now, I'm responsible for this money. None of this staff up here is elected and they're not going to get questions and they're not going to get knocked out of their seat because they didn't ask these questions. Staff, staff makes the rules and regulations and we, we, we've given it all these years. And up until two years ago, when I asked for the full budget, as far as I know, nobody had asked for the 500 pages in the budget and I did. Now, I had not planned on talking a lot tonight, but as it, as it comes about, since I started this thing, I think it needs to be brought out. Anybody can get online and they can look and see what these people are going to be making now. Now, some of them I, I can see and they're justified. One of them, you're not giving anything to and that's the one that you're talking about that we need to really help. But you're keeping that lady in the same salary that she's got right now. Now, was there a problem there? You know, I mean, she, she doesn't, are we going to give her some help? That's the area I think that if we're going to get all these grants and stuff that we need to work at. But some of these other folks, some of it's token to me, some of it is, I won't say that because I could get into a situation where, anyway. Your salary should be a savings to us. We're, we're growing more government and as you say, is at you and Rollin and Mary Ann's say so, that we're, we're going to be more efficient. Is it broke now? Why didn't you not come to us two years ago or three years ago when you took the order and then said, hey, I need some help doing this or we got to do this? I'm like Tim, I was under the assumption that when we put a new city manager in, we were moving up people in public works, put his position up to his position and the next one up to his position and it was going to be a minimal cost and we were promoting within. Now, you're leaving in two weeks and this is some form of nepotism to me because you're taking this hall all up and all these people are starting to get a whole lot of raises and different positions. Now, we're growing government. We're not stymying government. I would rather see your 300, almost $300,000 salary, I'd rather see it go out there on that street to those landfill workers, those garbage workers, those guys that read the meters and stuff like that. But that's not where it's going. It's going up here in this building here and that bothers me because without those people, we have nothing here. We, you know, we have a hard time keeping them. So, I mean, when I look at the way some of these salaries are, are doing and, you know, you just said it yourself, you spent two months, two or three months trying to do what? Trying to, trying to make us more efficient? And the biggest thing I've heard so far is our grant service director, Laura Hill, is the one that needs the help. You know, she's the one that's going to do it. Now, all these people are highly educated, I understand that, but when I'm looking at a superintendent that takes care of the most important thing we have in life and he doesn't make what we're wanting to make an assistant city manager at and he's over three or four times the amount of people and his budgets and, and everything, and then I look at a county judge that has a balance sheet that's great and he's making half of what you're proposing she makes and, you know, two times less than what our city manager's going to make, it, it kind of bothers me. You know, out here in the free market, if I'm building a house for somebody or I bid a house for somebody and I don't get it, the next guy gets it, he underbids me. We don't have that here. We have three people or four people telling us what they're going to do, what they're going to make and we vote for it. Now, I didn't mean to talk this much. I was going to try not to say a whole lot, but this upsets me because I, I, I can't, I can't go with some of these salaries. Now, my best bet is that you've got these salaries from that sheet that you gave us that I do not like to look at. And, you know, that, that, that's kind of the way I feel. I, I think we need to table this and look at this and talk about some of these salaries. But we weren't given that opportunity. We were called in and I purposely waited till the last one to get called in and I told you and Rollin that the best I could do right now would be to table this. And then bingo, we go into overdrive. You get on there and you get in the paper. You get, and Rollin gets on there and gets in the paper. Before, we've had a chance to even discuss this, y'all have come out there and tell everybody what we're going to do, how we're going to do it and, you know, one of the questions I posed to Dr. Mack a while back was, why are we, why are you on board with this? Well, we're going to save $130,000. We're not saving squat. We're giving it back to people that we hadn't even put in place yet. Now, if we have an issue, you should have brought it to us a year ago or two years ago or whatever when you got in here. These people that you're proposing are more than qualified, highly educated folks and I understand that, but I just have a problem with what we're spending money on and like Dr. Mack says, I'm over four people, but at the same time, I'm over that budget. And until two years ago, when I requested the whole budget, for instance, the arboretum, two years ago, you cut the $180,000 arboretum bid. I'm, I'm sorry, Doc, you want me to stop?
No, I just want to stay on focus.
I'm staying on focus. This is where I'm going to.
Okay.
And you can laugh about it, Keith, you can laugh all you want. Two years ago, you cut the arboretum budget $180,000.
I remember.
It was, you cut it down to 80,000.
I remember.
You said, we don't have the money. It's parks, we don't have the money. But we're, we're miraculously finding money for raises for people now. Now, you know, that, that bothers me. Last year, we had to do the same thing. This year, we got it back, most of it back, you know, and staff, you know, they can, they can find money for what they need it for and you found it for this. So I can't support this unless we table it and we can talk about it some more. I'm sorry, Doc.
Tell me when you're done.
I'm finished.
No one's going to interrupt you.
I'm finished, I'm finished, I'm finished.
Okay. You'll have to wait a second, Tim. First off, I'm going to tell you this. If you don't believe in competitive pay, you will never have an organization that thrives. If you don't pay competitively, people will leave here in droves. That's what got us into the point where we had crime running rampant in 2015. Go back and check your records, Steve. We didn't pay enough, we couldn't keep people on staff at the police department and we were up to 18 and 19 and 20 murders a year. We completely upped the pay, got competitive, we had, we down to where we are right now, under 10, sometimes five, sometimes three a year. Competitive pay keeps people around. You may not understand that, but I bet your carpenters don't stay around, they can find a job someplace else that it pays better than you pay. I bet that doesn't happen. So I'm not going to get into that with you. Second thing, the school and county budgets are a third of what our budget are, a third. County budget's what, 65 million? Ours is 165 million, Steve.
I know that.
That's a huge difference.
I know that.
Okay. Don't, don't compare apples to oranges. You can't compare a superintendent or a county judge to a city manager or an assistant city manager. Those are apples and oranges. Get your, get your facts before you start bringing apples and oranges to this council.
I called them. I called them. And I'm not talking about the police or fire department. I'm talking about staff in this building.
You said competitive pay. Will you competitive pay to do every department in this, in this organization? Every department is competitive pay.
I don't agree with that, but...
Well, you don't have to agree with it, but that's the way things are done.
No.
Tim?
Starting, circling back to one of the points that, that Ms. Nona raised, as I heard Keith's introduction of all the people, I believe that we had four of these people who had like or similar educational levels. Okay? And based on that, I'm, I'm often wondering, as Mr. Ray Wade said so eloquently, why are[1760.16] often wondering, as Mr. Ray Wade said so eloquently, why are we not necessarily letting our people, why are we not posting jobs for our people to be able to promote them to go forward? In other words, we, these are the selections that came from Keith and, and Roland. And if those six positions were put out for, this job opens on such and such day and this job closes, here are the qualifications, talk to human resources if you're interested. What would that list look like?
I don't have a clue. That's, that's not, that's not part of my, what I'm elected to do. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. But let me ask you this. When, when Angie Shepard reorganized the city secretary's office, how many of y'all had anything to say about that? Let me tell you how many of you, zero. When Jim Finley organized his office, how many of you had something to say about that? Uh, let me, zero. If Judge Merriman came to us and said, I'm going to reorganize the municipal court and I'm going to make it more efficient, I'm going to move some people around, it's not going to cost you a dime, I would say, go, Judd, you're doing what we elected, what we hire you to do. That's what we hire him to do. So I cannot understand why we're questioning what the city manager feels is best for this organization. Because whichever one of y'all has more experience as a city manager than Keith, I want you to step up here because you don't. We're taking the, the input from the person that we hire and taking what he says as what needs to happen in this community. And we're trying to dissect that. We're dissecting something that we're being given by the person that has the most experience in this organization. And I don't understand that concept. Because none of us are qualified to tell Keith what he does or doesn't know about being a city manager. And if you are, you need to step up. But you're not. Ray?
Mayor Mack, all right, I agree with you. Only, only reason why this is all so passionate for everyone is because it's the biggest representation of our city. And it's the biggest representation of what we all see that we could play a part in, in making a difference for not only the people who live in our community, but the people who work for the city that live in our community that constantly give us a call. I've had the best relationship with Mr. Bonds. Um, I think he did an incredible job while he was here. I have all the faith that Roland would do a great job. Um, where I stand on this, I think it's going to be our responsibility as council members to hold Roland and his staff responsible for making sure that we do see a representation of the city of Longview in our city departments on every level. And this is my first time being involved with it. And I can guarantee you, you know, moving forward, that I will be one of those people that will constantly make sure that Roland's staff, um, Mary Ann's staff or whoever they're dealing with does look like District Three. And there's people that live in District Three and in District Two that I can speak for them as well, that represent this on the city.
That is exactly what you should be doing, Ray. That is your job as an elected official. It's not our job to tell the city manager who to hire and fire.
All right, thank you.
You're right. Thank you.
You know, not.
It is our job.
No, it's not.
How to approve the department is.
To approve, not to tell it.
Okay.
That's what I said.
I'm sorry, Nana, go ahead.
No, no, y'all go ahead.
No, I'm done with that.
You know, as we all sit here in, in, in our seats and, and we are elected, I want to be able to go home tonight and sleep. And I won't be able to do that if this is, if this is what we have to do tonight. I don't understand why we can't wait, why, I mean, I value Keith. I trust everything that he says. But I think what we have to say is just as important. Why is it that we can't table it for a minute just to have a more in-depth conversation about it? What is the, the problem with that? And somebody correct me if, if.
It's only a problem if you have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with it.
Oh, okay.
So I have no reason to table something I have no problem with. I don't have an issue with it.
But.
Therefore, I'm comfortable with it. And I think it needs to move forward so that we give Roland every opportunity to start off doing what he feels is best for this community. And if you don't like the direction he's going, then you take it up with Roland.
I don't even think it's a question about Roland and, and his direction. I think it's all the other things that we're, we're, we're talking about. The salaries, the, the fact that there is no, uh, diversity, some of the, the things that are within the chart, the alignment. I, I think those are the issues that I would like to bring forward to discuss a little bit more in, in detail. Um, Roland, I mean, we, we, we know, we're moving forward with Roland. That's, that's done. It's the other things that we're, we're talking about.
Mr. Wright?
You know, we're talking about salaries. I think this is something that we, the council has done and we've set the scale. Am I correct?
Yes.
I mean, at one position, this is the range you can, of the salaries. And I think most of the salaries are near the bottom of those ranges. I'm not positive about that, but.
Begin salary.
I talked with you about those and most of them were at the bottom. So we set those, the last time we voted on pay raises, we set those ranges. So I don't think there's, I mean, we can go back down the road and, and discuss, should we change these ranges? But right now, those ranges are set. So we're not voting on salaries or anything like that right now, other than to say, well, we don't like it, so we're not going to approve this or something like that and leave it the way it is, I guess. And then, and then as far as diversity goes, I'm totally on the page with you. I agree a hundred percent. But that needs to be something that starts now. And we need to, maybe we need to set some policies in place, you know, that you need to start putting these people in where they can work their way up and become managers and stuff.
We've had that discussion in this, you say start now, it should have started a long time ago.
Hey, I agree a hundred percent.
Long, long time ago.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
Thank you for, for agreeing with that. Uh, we're just, and I understand, it's, it's, it's one of those situations where, um, things have been said, it's going to be done. Um, you know, I, I, I just, I, I, I don't agree with the way that it's being done, Mayor. Um, I, I, I think that expressing concerns and, and if we're saying we need to just pause just for a minute, just to talk about it a little bit more, uh, in detail, that we should be able to, to do that. Not saying it would change a thing, but it would during sure make us feel a little bit better that our input and what we have to say, uh, is being heard. Um, Roland's been around for a while. Uh, you know, the city as far as diversity and lack of diversity, been around for years. Nothing has changed in that area. It's always looked the way that it's looked. Uh, so who's to say that it starts now under Roland's leadership? Who's to say that we don't continue the same cycle that we have now? Why weren't we holding people accountable before now? I mean, saying.
We can only move forward. I mean, I think you're doing what we need to do. Somebody's got to turn the table over and we got to talk about it and we got to have those hard conversations.
I had a beautiful meeting with Mary Ann and we talked about, uh, a program possibly that would only, um, offer assistance to minorities, that would put them in positions to be promoted to director's position. Because guys, I mean, as it is, I mean, I, I think there are a few people who have been overlooked for positions. I think there are a few people right now that could probably, uh, be directors of positions. We've created positions, but in that creation, we did not consider any minorities for anything that we were creating. So when I think about the new positions and we're sitting, I know you said we're, the salary is already there. But I too, when I looked at that piece of paper and I know Laura has been here for years and she's put her time in and she probably hates that I'm calling her name out. But when I look at that and I see that she was probably the only one that didn't move as far as salary, am I correct in saying that, Keith?
Correct.
Okay. Didn't move. And I, I, those type of inconsistencies, I'm like, why for some and not for others? I, I just, I don't understand that.
She, she didn't get a promotion.
She's already a director. Yeah.
She didn't get a promotion.
She was only.
Only promote, only people that got pay raises are people that got a promotion from the job they were previously doing.
Okay.
And that's how organizations work. You promote and you usually get a pay raise. That's part, otherwise, there's no point of a promotion.
I don't know.
And so that's part of that whole scenario. Any other discussion, council?
I'm up to approve.
There's a, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second. All in favor? Single was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Aye.
Motion carries four, three. Out of the community interest, Mr. Carpenter.
Uh, we did not get the picture up at the last council meeting, but we have a, a new historical marker in District One recognizing Al Meyer and Aaron Castleberry who came and started Pine Tree and Pine Tree Cumberland Presbyterian Church. The marker's up. It's over on, uh, Silver Falls Road at the Fisher Cemetery. There will be a replica displayed at the school. And, uh, first and third Thursday is still at Gregton. There are up to a couple of hundred families, uh, on the food distribution. Uh, all are welcome, eleven to one, first and third Thursday.
Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening again, everyone. Um, music of Sam Cooke. The city of Longview and the Luton University Belcher Center are presenting the music of Sam Cooke this Saturday, January fifteenth. Tickets and more information are available at the Belcher Center. Also, um, no, we're not going to do the virtual. I'll say it.
We have a screen.
Oh, okay. You don't have a screen. I'll just say on then. Also, there's a virtual church service on the Longview Aerial Interdenominational Mysterial Alliance Facebook page on Monday, January seventeenth at noon. This is in lieu of the walk. Um, the service will be streamed from Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church and Reverend D.J. Nelson will be the keynote speaker for the event. Thank you.
Mr. Wade?
Yes. Um, a portion of Marbury Avenue between Merle Avenue and Oakdale Avenue would be temporarily reconfigured from January fourteenth to January thirty-first to demonstrate the roadway's planned complete street redesign. The Marbury Complete Street Project will consist of reducing the number of travel lanes from five to three lanes to add buffered bike lanes and improve existing sidewalks to Marbury Avenue. The goal of the project is to make Marbury Avenue safe and accessible for both pedestrians and cyclists and efficiently manage existing and future traffic demands. The temporary lane configuration will use cones and signage to demonstrate the complete street layout along the Thero Fair during the two-week period. A community event will be held at three P.M. on Saturday, January fifteenth for all who walk, bike, or drive down Marbury Avenue to demonstrate the safety improvements provided by the complete street. The event will be held at the South Ward Community Park at ten eleven South Marbury Avenue. In addition to demonstrating proposed road changes, parks and recreation staff will provide activities at the park. Sounds like a great event. Hope everyone can make it.
Mrs. Shahara?
I agree.
Mr. Wright?
Yeah, after this meeting, I do have one thing I want to say. The, um, uh, picking up packets to, for the election, for the upcoming election is opening up. So I just wanted to announce that, uh, for anybody considering running in District Five, I will not be running again. So, uh, feel free to pick up a packet.
Wait, what was that? You got to speak clearly. You're going to like remove yourself from a seat. You got to stand up and say that.
That's what I'm doing.
Is that what you're doing?
That's what I'm doing.
Did, did the city secretary get that? I think it was mixed there.
I think you approved it already.
Well, I tell you, Mr. Wright, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I won't miss you bullying me around up there. But you're a great guy. It's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done for Longview. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Perdor?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bonds?
Oh, thank you.
Martin Luther King Junior Day. City office will be closed Monday, January seventeenth. The Reserve is a Martin Luther King Junior Day. Sanitation and recycling will run on its regular schedule the week of January seventeenth. Curbside recycling is unavailable. Rivers Recycling, our local materials recovery facility, will be closed for maintenance between January twenty-fourth and February the twentieth. So all items collected from outside recycling carts during this time will be taken to the landfill. Also, please be aware that COVID is still amongst us. The Omicron variant is in full force and it's affecting us as hard as any of the other variants or the original, original virus has. Um, our numbers are up exponentially. So, um, do your part, whatever you feel is your part. Mask when you feel necessary, uh, social distance and wash your hands. Do the things that we know that work. And, um, hopefully, we will get past this as soon as possible. Thank you for your attendance. We adjourn.